The In My Opinion Show, originally produced by Ronald Ray Robinson, has evolved over the years into a powerful and recognized platform for addressing topics and politicians often avoid due to the potential backlash from their constituents. This is the In My Opinion Show, and I'm Henry Hatter, your guest. These elected officials may face threats if they vote against legislation that benefit only the selected few. The In My Opinion Show advocates legislation that benefit all Americans rather than legislation that creates winners and losers, as the congressional action does, as claimed by intellectuals such as Thomas Sowell, Victor David Hanson, and Steve Kotkins of the Cato Institute. The In My Opinion Show features guests who have contributed to the marketplace of ideas, shaping our understanding of reality and leaving behind our egos, our pride, and our narcissism. The show undertakes a laissez-faire approach, emphasizing fair and just outcomes for all Americans, and is guided by the marketplace in line with the ideas of the framers of the Constitution and the concerns raised in the Federalist Papers. Everyone has a voice, regardless of who you are. The In My Opinion Show encourages all Americans to embrace the grounds that they stand on, cherish and uphold the freedoms of speech, and to enjoy the blessings of liberty. If you fail to do the least of these, you have found the enemy, and he is you. In a free and democratic society, every person is entitled to his opinion, even if it may not always align with the facts and the truth. This is Henry Hatter again, and this is the In My Opinion Show. Today I have Christine, again, candidate Christine from Burton. She's a candidate for the Burton Township Board of Trustees. Welcome, Christine.
Thank you, Henry.
Would you please just let us know again about who you are? And I apologize, I have the flu, and you can probably tell. And I've been sneezing a lot, so I hope you don't care about that.
Oh, I'm good with that. I actually found something recently that helps with that kind of stuff, so if you're interested, I can share that info.
Okay.
I'm Christina Fitcha-Hitson, and I'm councilwoman for Burton right now. And I'm the incumbent looking to run another term. And I'm running because my people need me. I believe that Burton City needs to have their voice and needs to keep it. And I'm a good voice for them. I'm a trusted and tried council member. I've had my four years' experience, and I believe that they want me back. And wherever I go, that seems to be the consensus, that they tell me that they want me back. So that's why I'm running.
Can you remind your constituents what the major functions of the trustee does?
Yeah, the city councilperson is mainly in charge of the budget. That's where we do the most of our work. We usually have to do maybe two or three budget meetings per week for at least a straight month. It takes us a long time to hash out some of the details of the budget. The mayor will bring us his ideas and what he wants the budget to be, and we have to okay his decisions and go along with whatever he says. So if there's something in there that somebody would not want in a neighborhood, they would be able to share some of that information with their council members and say, you know, "I trust that you will make the right decision on any new budget items." And so, you know, we're responsible for their decisions and what the administration is going to do. And so we'll give them the okay, like with that roundabout. We did, we gave them the okay.
Good. You know, now here's a question I want to ask you, Christina. You expressed this.
Didn't mean to, but we did. That's where they put it in.
Good. Now we're going to get into the substance of the stuff.
Uh-oh.
Now, last week or a couple of weeks ago, you expressed your desire to seek a third term as an incumbent
Yeah.
in order to better serve the people in your district. You aim to reduce the influence of political parties and constant focus on your reelection.
Yes.
This approach is intended to help distance yourself from the dysfunctional gridlock that appears to be significant threat to not only Burton, but to the well-being of the country. Please explain that.
Well, I think that we need to be more for the people like we used to be, like the founding fathers originated all of our governments to be. We got to be for the people and let them, like I was just saying, like in the budget time, let them be the one on our mind, not us trying to please this person, that person, this person who's going to help us get reelected, this person who's going to put money donations into my fund. That's not my key. My key is, the people that support me, my key constituents are the ones that just personally support me. I don't get PAC money. I don't get people saying, "Oh, let's do a fundraiser for you, and we'll, you know, help say that you did this or that," or whatever. That's not my game. My game is I go door-to-door to the people. I talk to the people, and I ask them what they want. When we had that situation that did come up this year with that roundabout, we decided that's what we were going to do. We were going to find out what they wanted and actually do what they came to tell us to do, and that's stop the roundabout. And so what I decided to do was the research. And when I did that research, I realized that, yes, the roundabout did not need to be there. And yes, it probably would hurt the person whose property it was going to go on. And yes, there is a way to stop it. And with that kind of research and that kind of desire to pleasing my constituents and helping the citizens, I was one of the only ones to do it, to be able to tell everyone how to do it. And so when it came down to getting it done, they looked at me and they're like, "What's your, what are you going to do?" Because I was like, "You want to hear what I have to do?" And they're like, "Okay, what is it?" And I told them, and they did it. I actually was able to move my own motion, and I was able to have it passed. I mean, how could you say no? I mean, as a councilperson, how could they say no to the people when they're directly right there in their business, you know? And so I think it made them think better. I think it made them really sit down and think, you know?
Yes. Now, we talked about this, we got into it the last time.
Yeah, we got a little bit into it, yeah.
I want to go over this again because there may have been other people, "What did she say? Did I hear what she said? She said?" Okay, I'm going to ask you one of those kind of questions.
Uh-oh. A clarifying one, okay.
When did the city of Burton and the city of Flint proclaim themselves nonpartisan also? And this, is this the truth, how the people of this twin city see themselves? We understand judgeships are nonpartisan in school districts. But what about political communities? For example, consider the city of Flint. It says it's nonpartisan, but it elects 90% of their electorate candidates are Democrat. How do you proclaim that a nonpartisan district? How do we do that?
Well, to be a city councilperson, you really can't be partisan. Because, I mean legally, you can't be partisan because that would mean that you would only be serving half your city or quarter of your city, or even 10% of your city, depending on who's getting elected. So you have to serve the whole city, and that's why I think, that's why they're nonpartisan. So when they wrote their charter, they wrote it nonpartisan.
Yeah, but you have to organize your city in terms of government regulation, state regulation. They're the ones that design the structure of what a government municipality ought to be like.
Right.
The state, of course, are extremely political. You're either Democrat or Republican or independent.
Right.
And communities like Flint and Dan Black and Burton and so on, those people are divided also in political jurisdictions. But yet, they proclaim themselves, yeah. They proclaim themselves as independents or nonpartisan. And that needs some work. We need to work on that. And you have a candidate down at Hubble who has proposed to the legislature to allow school board members to be designated Republicans and Democrats. What do you think about that?
Wow, that's interesting. I would say that's probably not a good idea.
Why?
Because just because you're a school board member and the people who are voting want to know if it's Republican or Democrat, I really don't think, I don't think you can actually act on one or the other. I think you have to serve both parties.
Why not?
I mean, I don't want my, I don't want my school board fully Democrat or fully Republican. I need them balanced.
But it's okay for the city of Flint or Burton, the city of Burton to be...
But we're not. We don't declare party. We're supposed to be nonpartisan.
But your actions are the result of the actions.
Lately, lately.
It's always been that way in Flint.
Yeah, lately it's been pretty one-sided on that way. But actually, some people lately, I mean, I have a friend, and she's a, well, I don't know if she's Republican, but I know she has a lot of values that Republicans value. And I have some other friends that have served on City of Flint, and they had the same values as I did. And fought for the same things, you know, for the schools and stuff like that, for the school boards.
But I really think that people in themselves cannot live with one-party perspectives on all of that. It's just impossible.
Exactly. I don't think, I don't think that's wise at all to have a one-party perspective. I think people have to learn to unify.
Yeah, but I don't think that I can live that way either because I think that there's some good ideas on the other side, and we need balance.
Exactly.
Balance to hold the reins of government because government will slip away from you if you don't. You got to have those two sides. It's like man and wife, or mom and dad, you know? They control the family, so...
Yeah, I agree. I agree. I don't think either side should feel like they can ignore the other side.
Well, we're going to watch, we're going to watch what happens with the legislation proposing to make school boards partisan. And that doesn't sound good to me. I've already written to the state of Michigan posing my opposition to such.
Yeah, because that might give them more desire to declare themselves, you know, their ideas and stuff. Although, I mean, that would be more transparent. I can see both ways. I can see how it's a good idea and how it's a bad idea. One way, you're being transparent, and you're being forced to be transparent and pick a side or pick your values and share them, and, you know, be transparent and tell. And then the other one, you can sneak in there and do your own little thing, pretend to be this and pretend to be that, playing both sides and not really declare. And then when it comes down to it, surprise, guess what, this is what we're going to do.
But isn't that what we do anyway?
That's what's been getting done anyway, but...
That's why we have...
So that's why I'm saying there's good and bad for that idea. But to declare someone fully one way means that I'm going to feel, when they win, I'm going to feel like I didn't win, like I have no voice anymore.
I don't think that we ever let people know our true feelings about anything. We don't have to, and the law says that we don't have.
That's right.
We have the right to our own, we can't testify against ourselves or spouses and so on.
Refuse to answer on the grounds that they incriminate me, yeah. Please the best.
Legislation is cruel enough, and the structure of absolute governments is enough to deter that from the minds of people who want to keep the, something sacred to themselves.
Right.
And we have that authority. But to come out and say that we are going to be forthright, truthful, and always tell the truth, and always share our values and stuff like that.
You're talking to a politician, right?
We don't do that. That's an unrealistic view of public policy.
I really, that's why I say I don't really think it makes much of a difference here or there with that particular legislation. Just leave it the way it is. It's going to do it anyway.
Yeah, but...
There's really no need to declare.
You have to structure.
You got to do your homework. As a voter, you got to do your homework. They're trying to stop the voter from being able to do their homework. Do their homework.
Governments must be ordered and structured.
Yeah.
It must be the same kind of a process that baboons and monkeys and other primates, you lions, they have an order of structure, right?
Well, the Bible has an order structure too, yeah. So I think we just, as human beings and the way that we've been made, I think that that's an actual thing we have to have. And without it is the opposite, which is chaos. And we've been seeing a lot of that lately, a lot of chaos. Because we don't have unity, we don't have a lot of order and structure.
Okay, I'm going to jump to another, we've exhausted that.
Uh-oh.
I think people will have to make up their minds as this legislation moves and to decide whether they want the school board, unlike judgeships, to be political. And I like, I tell you the truth, I like school boards unpolitical. I know I'm not supposed to voice my opinion.
But this is the opinion show, though.
I feel very firm on that one. Let's, now, two weeks ago, you and I and others were at the Kirk vigil.
Oh, yeah.
Right?
Yeah.
What is some of the key truths that Charlie Kirk encouraged students in America to embrace? Now, everybody, even adults, looking at this event of Charlie Kirk and his assassination. So something new that's causing a rebirth of something here, something's happening.
Yes.
We don't know what's happening, but we'll...
Well, I kind of know. I kind of feel it. And I think it's, well, let's just go to what Charlie Kirk wanted to be remembered for. He didn't want to be remembered as a political person. That was not his job. He wanted to be remembered for what he did for God because he stood up for everything that the Bible is very clear on. And that's where sometimes people don't have their itching ears taken care of, you know? Because those itching ears, it says in the Bible that they're going to want itching ears, and they're going to want people to treat them, you know, say this is not wrong, when it is wrong. And sometimes Charlie was very able to share with them how wrong it was. And I think that's one of the things they called hate speech. And I mean, as a person who studied the Bible, I totally saw where Charlie was on that. And one of the things he was sharing was that the people need to be united, and they need to be able to speak. And he wanted everyone to have a voice, didn't matter what they said. He didn't say, "Oh, your voice is gone, goodbye." He never stopped someone and took away the mic. They might have ran out of their time because everybody had to have a chance to talk, but he always let them speak. And one of the things I remember the most about Charlie is his opinion on why we need government and Christianity to work together. And he says that, how do you say that? He said something like, Jesus was one of the first political, he got involved in some of the first political situations. And one of the things he did is he's always after the Pharisees. Well, the Pharisees were political. He was always after the Sadducees, and he was into the governments because that was the government. I mean, yes, Caesar was the government, but that's like the federal government, okay? But the local government, Jesus was very, very involved in the local government. And even the federal part of his government, if we per se that, you know, if you would call Caesar federal, you know what I'm saying? Because it's like high and low, local and community. But anyway, for the country, because that's kind of how the country was run, by the king. We'll call him the king.
If that were true, if that were true, and we know it was.
Yes.
But consider this, when the Americans founded the Constitution and after they declared declaration, why was one of the key elements, one of the first things they considered, to separate government and religion? Why then?
Because the religion was so strong that it took over the government. And that's not what they wanted. They didn't want a government that was fully religious. They wanted it to have its place because they were all saying, you know, you have to belong to a church to run for a position, you know? Those are some old rules, you know, of the founding fathers. And people had to belong to their churches to get elected. People had to know the Bible to get elected. People had to do those things to be elected into government. So they did want government in with politics, with Christianity and politics together because they believed that the wisdom came from the Christianity. The wisdom to run a government came from knowing the Bible. It came from taking the chaos away and making it more organized.
I think that George Washington and Abraham Lincoln and John Madison were some of the people who were great proponents of religion in the church.
Yeah.
And there's something good about the church that we don't see today, and it's poisoned our people
Yeah.
against, in doing things that are dastardly.
Yeah.
Like, for example, the kill at will, the turning the backs on people who are in need, things like that. But religion teaches people restraint.
Right.
Even if you don't believe in it, it teaches people restraint. And most of our laws are based on the Ten Commandments. Do you believe that? Thou shall not kill
Yeah.
or cover the neighbor's wife, or...
That would sure stop a lot of violence, wouldn't it?
Yeah, and we know that people get killed over those kind of things today. And what do you say about that? Now, I've challenged your argument. You say that they wanted Caesar and all of those were part of the government, and Christians had to argue with them what's right and wrong and how to make good legislation that affects all people?
Right, too.
Now, I kind of recap that and summarize.
Okay, well, what I see is that Jesus got very much involved in his politics because he even went to a kind of a real political situation where they were selling, because people had to have forgiveness, they had to have these things to sacrifice. And so they were selling these doves and selling all these creatures for the blood sacrifices for their sins. And when Jesus came in, they had the money changers, and the money changers had like weights that weren't properly measured. And so when Jesus saw them cheating them, just so that people can get the forgiveness of God, it was just like a really deep-down dirty, and it just really upset him. And he's like, "No, you guys, you are cheating people because of their desire to please God and to get their sins forgiven. And these people are getting gypped, you know? And so he turned over all those tables, and he's just like, "No, you've turned my father's house into a den of thieves." And I think that's what's happening in our situation, in our lives. We have these people that are money changers, making all kinds of money off of us and the needs of our people. And we need to really just kind of stop it and reset it and go back to what Jesus did, just reset it all, dump the tables, reset it all, and get the people that need it the most, get them out there, get them the things they need, get the churches involved with these people that are in need instead of having to deal with the government and all that. Let's start getting our churches more involved. We've got Catholic charities helping people with rent. We've got these other organizations that we can start building. We can even build more. We can even help people more. We could actually create our own, like church-like healthcare system where we could do this temporarily to replace our government right now, who's just in a big old chaotic mess, you know? Until they get their mind and stuff together, till we can get things together, I think the church is going to need to step up and do something. That's what I think.
Well, let me ask you this. Do you think that you're adding too much Christianity into your conversation for your audience or your constituents?
This is in my opinion show.
Yeah, you're right, you're right.
This is my opinion, and my Lord is my opinion. He shapes my opinion.
You got me on that one. Okay, you got me. You're right. So you told the people that this is your time to speak, and this is your opinion, and everybody has one.
That's right.
And if they fail to use the least of those, they are their own enemy, right?
That's right.
Okay, okay. Now, do you think that Charlie Kirk's comments about unearned privileges provoke strong reactions among Black Americans regarding the contributions of efforts and ingenuity? And what it meant is...
Well, I think, I think what it is, is he was just trying to get them to think. And he was trying to put it in such a way that they would understand. Because when you're told something again and again and again and again, you believe it. The more you're told, the more you believe. And so he was trying to tell them something in a different way to, just to get them to think about it. Because, I mean, if you really do think about it, I lived in affirmative action in my life, and I was able to benefit from it. I was. You know, I was in a very poor neighborhood, grew up near Detroit. You know, I had, I had the under privileges, but got also the privileges of my heritage, being Native American and all. And we, you know, we got involved in things thinking, you know, we just, like, I was on... I'm not going to, I'm not going to lie, I'm going to be very truthful. I was on government assistance for at least 12 years of my life. I'm telling you, we grew up very poor. And we appreciated the government assistance. We did not take it for granted. As soon as we could, we got off of it. It took 12 years, right? I know, right? But it took us that long because we were with my grandfather. He was deaf. We all lived together. He kind of took care of us, we kind of took care of him. We just kind of took care of each other.
What a great testimony. And I know the people are listening to this, and many of them will appreciate what you're saying. And they won't challenge you because you told them that this is the In My Opinion Show.
That's right.
Everybody has one.
Yep.
And they should abide by that for themselves. If they fail to do the least of, then they have found the enemy, and they are the worst of their...
Right.
Okay, now...
Which is what we said about Charlie, that he was working for opinions and things like that, yep.
Now, you happen to know the shooter on the same, the day before, the same day of the event that we were...
That wasn't me, that was the other guy. But I knew the shooter because of the month before, just before the election. It was in August.
Okay, explain that process. How did that come about? You were connected...
Well, unfortunately.
You knew the shooter somehow.
Only for a few seconds, right?
Right? Even if it's only a few seconds, but you know who he was, right?
Yeah, he was, he was a man who was outside his house, and we were just passing now, you know, getting to know neighbors on Atherton Road. And we were passing out our card and our signs and like, "Hey, you know, your road is really close to the road, you know, and this is your house. And could I put it at your area there, you know, on the edge, not too far from the middle, you know? They don't want it in the right of way so people can see in turn, and so you got to get permission." So we just had to meet him, and he kind of got in a little conversation, not very much, you know? Just kind of talking, about his family and stuff. "Yeah, sure, sure, you're a good person. Okay, yeah, sure." You know, so that's all I knew of him, he seemed like a normal person, you know? I never would have thought he would do such a thing.
What were the demography of that church that was attacked by the man?
It was fully mixed. I mean, there's lots of different people there.
Give me kind of a vision of what that church is like. 10% of this and 20% of that.
I would say, I would say almost equal of everything. I would say, I would say almost equal of everything. It was, we had people from, in that church, the person that I talked to, they said that there were people from like China and Korean and different people in that church from different areas of the world. It was very, very well-versed. I mean, it's not like, you know, it was like all one demography, you know? It wasn't all one kind of group of people. It wasn't like.
So they had a great distribution of people by age, race, gender and culture?
Yeah. It was a big church.
Yeah.
It was.
So everybody felt the agony.
Yeah.
Of, uh, being a witness to what happened.
Oh, yeah.
What would Charlie Kirk's, um, uh, what would his legacy look like?
Well, from what I see with Charlie, he wants his legacy to be, um, all about God. He doesn't want to be remembered for anything but what he did for God in his ways. And his legacy is bringing people closer to God. He brought people closer to their, their families. He would talk to people and they'd be like, I haven't talked to my mom or dad in whatever years. And he would tell them, well, maybe you should. You never know how long you're gonna have with somebody. And that unforgiveness could harm you. You may never be able to get that time back that you've had unforgiveness towards your loved ones. And so in my opinion, I believe that one of Charlie's legacies was trying to get families back together again. Trying to get people to start talking to each other again, opening up those conversations that need to be had so that people can start speaking to each other again. Because when you go to talk to somebody and they just say, I'm not talking to you, you're this and that, and they just walk away. I don't want to talk to you. How are you ever gonna get close? So that's who he was talking, he was trying to tell them as kids going to college, you need to get back with your parents, you need to talk to your parents again, you need to give them a chance to talk to you and you need to have a conversation with them. Because we need freedom of speech for everyone, you know, if everyone counts.
Now, I'm gonna ask you another question that, so you can clarify. I know that you said this and, and I went home, um, thinking, what did she say? Well, what's your concept on reparations?
That was a very, very difficult question. Um, I would probably benefit from it. So in a way, I would love to say, yeah, go for it, but then I have to ask myself, well, wait a minute, maybe I wouldn't benefit from it. And then I had to ask myself, well, wait a minute, who benefits from it? And then I have to think, how do you find out who benefits from it? And then you have to find out who's gonna pay it and who's supposed to pay it. So I guess in my way, if you could prove that the benefits were needed, like something truly happened to them as a person in their lifetime. And they lost out on something because of other people's behaviors, whatever they did, you know, whatever they had done to them or their family, then they deserve some kind of, you know, recompense, I would say. But I really don't think we can find that right now.
Well, let me, let me tell you what.
It's too long time past.
Yeah, let me tell you what is on the minds of many young, uh, Americans. But that don't look like me.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Uh, the young people feel that it's unfair for them to assume the ills of their grandparents or great-grandparents or their forefathers.
Yes, that's exactly it.
They weren't there to make a decision. And they say, we don't think that there's something needs to be done. Yeah, there's something that should be done for reparation, but they don't know what. But it's not their, it's not their charge.
Right, that's what I was just saying.
We should not be charging them.
Exactly.
Uh, so does that need more discussion and more work with people?
No, I think, I think we need to do what Charlie Kirk's widow did.
What's that?
Forgive them for they know not what they do.
Oh, okay.
Forgive them for they know not what they do.
And stuff like.
All of them. If we all could say as a nation of the United States of America, forgive them for they know not what they do.
But people.
And give it up and give up all the sadness, give it all up as if it never happened and move on to a brighter world, to a world filled with hope, liberty, life, happiness, unity, joy. I would trade all of this mess that I see for just a whole group of people who have all at once, as a nation of the United States of America, as a citizen of the United States of America, just said, forgive everyone, they don't know what they've done, let's start it all over again, let's, let's forget it all and forgive and forget. I think that God would do a miracle in our economy more than what we could ever imagine. I think this whole country could, could be blessed with the most overflow of money and that would be our reparations. What does it say in the word? It says that we are to give it to God. He says vengeance is mine, thus saith the Lord, I will repay. That means he not only will get vengeance, which I don't think he needs right now. I think he wants to do the opposite. I think he wants to give us blessings. But what stands in our way of blessings is that unforgiveness.
What powerful statements, do I? And I hope that the audience was listening to it.
I do, too.
I, I hope they were listening. I hope they're writing comments on how well they like the show, your comments, or they just approved it. Give us the best you've got because we can take whatever is coming, right?
Well, they're very tough questions that you ask. And I had to ask myself in my spirit, you know, what would Jesus say? And I think that's what Jesus would have answered. Because, you know, they came to him and asked him some really tough questions, too.
I know they're gonna kick me off in a couple minutes. I, I got a couple other things I wanna ask you. Consider gerrymandering.
Okay.
Now, gerrymandering is not a new idea.
Right.
It's been going on for years. As a matter of fact, Mr. Gerrymander lived long ago.
Yeah.
Okay? So gerrymandering was a way that strong politicians who thought that the spoils of public policy should belong to those who are the strongest, the best functioning people and the ones who have, um, um, who, who are blessed by privilege.
Yeah.
And money, right? And, and that's, uh, and it's too bad that that's how we are as human beings. But that's part of the human endeavor. It's called the, um, human factor. And it's in all of us. And, uh, how do you think that we ought to resolve the gerrymandering problem? Uh, because I, when I first was introduced to gerrymandering, it was where they set aside a black district in Genesee County.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, for, um, a black person to serve in public policy. And the, the gerrymandered district was, um, partitioned in such a way that only a Democrat went.
Right.
Did you know that?
Yeah.
Yeah. And that's how we, uh, gerrymandered districts all over the country.
Yeah.
It's so that, uh, and cities are run by Democrats. And you know, and you remember what I said? That it takes both parties to run government and to hold the reins on government? And yet here we see this, this model here, this developed that doesn't benefit for one point of view.
Right.
Uh, so how do you think we ought to resolve that issue? And people are gonna listen to your response because they don't have the answer either.
Yeah. Well, it's a, it's a very difficult question again. You're full of a lot of difficult questions. But, um, I guess, um, gerrymandering is new to me because I, I never really saw it until they started redoing our districting. When they started redistricting, I actually got to see what gerrymandering really was. And they were saying, we're gerrymandered already. And they had to read gerrymander it or something. It didn't make a lot of sense because when I went door to door, when I went person to person, when I talked to each person, each voter, they told me the same thing. I'm not sure if I'm your district or not. I'm not sure what I am. I don't know who I'm with. I don't know what city. I don't know how to get involved with anything because I don't know where to start. So what's been happening with gerrymandering lately is it's been used to cause extreme confusion and to actually un-unify everyone's base, except maybe the base that's been gerrymandered.
Yeah, but.
So it divides everybody.
Both Republicans.
And their cities aren't working together.
But Republicans and Democrats benefit from it.
I know, but the cities don't work together. They're the ones who are getting in trouble. They're the ones that are not benefiting.
Yes.
The people who we're supposed to be helping are not getting the benefit. It's the politicians who are getting benefited and the people are losing out.
Gerrymandering also produces winners and losers, don't they?
Sure does.
So, uh, is that a good thing for your district? Is that a good thing for the community? Is that a good thing for the country? Because it creates winners and losers through this process?
Creates division.
You know, and, and it's never going to be a perfect situation because we're human beings.
Yeah.
And it's just, uh, and that's the human condition that we live under. But, uh, if, uh, it continues this way, we need to explain it to the public so the public understands it. And they could better deal with it. But right now, we are getting, uh, fantasies just bouncing off the wall from all directions and don't make sense.
Right.
People need to know that gerrymandering is a way that we do business. We group ourselves with people of our own kind, generally like where do we group ourselves? Uh, with my money, my association, my education, by all of those kind of things. So gerrymandering is not something that's new. It's been here since at least 1860.
Yeah.
Because those districts were gerrymandered so that, uh, black, uh, people could be elected to Congress in those days.
Right.
They were elected to Senate. You know, we had 19 people there during the Civil War in 1861.
They actually changed the Senate to an elective position so that we could have more people elected.
So gerrymandering is not something new. You just need to understand how it works, right?
Right.
Have you got any concluding statements you wanna make about that?
Um, all I wanna say is, I would, we were saying, am I for or against it and why? I would say I'm against it because our people need to be more unified. I feel like it's still tearing us apart.
Yes.
I feel like it's taking cities and ripping cities apart. It's just ripping and tearing and crushing the spirit of the people. Because the people don't feel listened to. They don't feel respected. They don't feel even like their vote counts. Because of what's going on with the gerrymandering, they feel like their vote just will never count. I'm living in a city where, you know, my gerrymanding district is all Democrat, you know? So my vote will never count, you know, and that's how they'll feel.
Yeah.
And so, but how are they gonna be unified as a city when it's like half the city here is this one and half the city over here is this one? You know, I mean, there's so many districts that are now, recently, they've been breaking them up for cities.
Christina, you've had a great dialogue on this. I, I gotta ask you. Just my last question. I, uh, each time I ask you, I talk about this, I say, well, this is my last question.
Okay.
I gotta ask you this last question.
Oh, he's got another one on me.
The NBA, uh, they discovered this ring of very high-profile people that we thought at one time that were our heroes, great gods that could do no wrong. And yet what's being exposed is that they, they had this gambling scenario going on. It's been going on for years, I understand.
Oh, wow.
So you may not, you may not remember that or you may not read up on that because you have, uh, young people that you have to teach in the church. Because you, you pastor in the church, right?
Um, I'm not pastoring. I work for the pastor.
You work for the pastor?
Yeah, they have me doing some, um, Sunday school teaching.
Okay, now here's the question. I've set it up for you. Now, here's the question. Pete Rose, one of the greatest players that ever played the game.
Yeah.
Good hitter. And I think he was a catcher. I'm not sure. But he broke lots of records. But because once he went out and bet on somebody and exposed it for years, at least two or three generations, uh, decades rather, they have kept him out of the Hall of Fame.
Yes.
Now, will Pete Rose now get his due in the Hall of Fame? With, with, with the exposure of?
Now that he's been vindicated, kind of sort of? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, but you see what's happening to sports, what's going on right now in sports is really sad to the American people because they feel that the people they go to watch and everybody goes loves of, um, an athlete, athletes are loved more than parents, more than money.
Yeah, yeah, I see that sometimes, yeah.
More than goodwill, you know?
Yeah.
And, uh, and they've lost, uh, some credibility in how they look at athletes now.
Oh, wow.
Because they, um, they don't know whether they're seeing talent or cheating. Well, see basketball, is that guy doing something now? That's, uh, going to, uh, affect the game in a, a, uh, unbeneficial way.
In a negative way?
Yeah, in a negative way.
Kind of like throw in the game, kind of idea.
Now, will Pete Rose now, after 30 years, not be getting into the Hall of Fame? Will he now get into the Hall of Fame? Because they're gonna have to forgive a lot of these people for what they did. Uh, so we can get on and recreate, I have a renaissance for sport so that everybody can again believe in sports, whether it's boxing or whether it's basketball, football, baseball or tennis.
Hmm.
Well, all those things are under indictment right now.
Wow.
By the public.
Wow, that's pretty amazing.
What do you think? Do you think, my question is, do you think Pete Rose would get into the? And we'll talk about this again because I'm gonna have you on that and tell you, I told you something.
Um, well, I'm gonna have to go back to forgive them for they know not what they do. Because if we cannot forgive and forget, but yet keep it from happening again, we have to hold them accountable. We can't just, that, that would be turning their back and not watching. That would be not acknowledging it. But we have to do that, which we did. And we took care of whatever we had to take care of and we did whatever we had to do because you said indictment and all that. I think we do need to let consequences be, you know, as, as a testament for others so it doesn't happen again. But as American people, I think we need to just move, move on and let it.
My question was.
And let him be in the Hall of Fame.
Oh, okay, because my question was Pete Rose.
Yeah.
And everybody knows who I'm talking about. They should know. You know, except young people, you know, who may not know who he is.
I think they can let him in the Hall of Fame.
You think that he should go into the Hall of Fame?
I think they should let him because of what he was able to do.
Do you think he will get into the Hall of Fame after this, uh, fund account? Because you got some people who were involved in this that were in the Hall of Fame.
Yeah.
And they were coaches.
Well, you know, if they were allowed in, they either are gonna have to be pulled out or he's gonna be allowed in. It's, I mean, you have to be fair. You can't be unfair.
Now, now, so that it doesn't happen again, how should Americans treat gambling in sports? Should that be a prohibition, a strong prohibition? And I think the NBA has had that as a strong prohibition for many years. All of the sports have that.
Yeah, I didn't think it was allowed myself. I see it on TV for fun. But I always thought that was just them, you know, pretending that it happens.
Well, Christina, you've been.
Under the table kind of stuff going on without, you know, actually being.
Christina, you've been a great guest. You know, time has come to an end. I've enjoyed this very much.
It has.
You've had a lot to say to our public. And you, you know how to say it and you said it well. And you said it with confidence and courage. And, um, and this is what the public is going to appreciate. They don't want to hear from you what you think other people want you to say, but what's in your heart.
Yeah.
What you believe in.
Yeah.
And I think you did a good job of that. And, um, this is, uh, Henry Hatter and. And, um, this is, uh, Henry Hatter and, and the show is coming to an end. This is the In My Opinion Show. And I'm Henry Hatter. Thank you.